We can see, I'm here ya.
Okay. All right, folks, we'll bring our meeting to order. It is, apologize for the delay, but we were trying to make sure that the, that the broadcast system is working. And it's 9:06, we'll convene our meeting at this time. And for those of you who will be watching this as a recorded event, please know that it is not broadcasting live because of system issues. And our audiovisual technician is not here in the mornings, so we did the best we could to get it going. We're fairly certain that it is recording, and Adam will be putting it up on the website at his earliest opportunity. So with that, we'll call this meeting of Kingston Select Board to order. It's May 19, 2025. And if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions around the table, let's see. We'll start with, to my board members to our right, my right, Ellen Faulkner. Peter Baiki is not with us yet. I don't know if he will join us, or probably not. Okay. To my right, Ellie Alessio, board member and vice chair. I'm your current chair, Glenn Koppelman. To my left, Susan Eyre, the board's administrative assistant. And then Laurie Swed, board member. And around the table, we have, adjusting his chair, fire chief, Graham Pellerin, town clerk, tax collector, Tammy Baiki. And our new finance officer, Marissa Federico. So, Marissa, thank you, and welcome in your new role. Pedro Avila, sorry. Building inspector, code enforcement officer, Tom Rowan, highway agent. In the audience, and coming up shortly, will be Ernie Landry with Heritage Commission, and Rick Russman with Energy Committee. What's that? All right. Okay, so before we invite Ernie up, I need to read a statement. And I wrote it down because I don't want to go off script, and I want to make sure that the words I say are the words that I intend to say. So I'm just gonna read it, and I don't anticipate or encourage any discussion about it, but this is my, this is my statement to the folks here in the room, and to anyone who might be listening out there. By now, you are probably aware of a recent 91A right-to-know request by a Kingston resident that was handled in a less-than-professional manner by the town. Although the request was fulfilled within the required statutory timeframe, some of the email dialogue between me and the Select Board's Administrative Assistant while processing the request was inappropriate and unbecoming to the positions we hold. I sincerely apologize for any inappropriate comments of mine during this transaction. I will do better going forward. And I believe Susan has something to say.
I do, I'll add on to that. I included my own comments that were not, that I shouldn't have included, and for that I apologize. This was not to the professional standards that I tried to maintain, and it won't happen again.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, first order of business would be any department, I'm sorry, any board or committee members, and I believe Ernie Landry has requested to speak with us.
Bob Dean, our newly elected chairperson of the Heritage Commission, will be here this morning, since we're talking about budget. Unfortunately, he had a pre-scheduled conflict with this, so he sends his regrets for not being here, so I'll go ahead and talk about the budgetary things that we wanted to deal with. We are receiving some donations for the celebration, the anniversary celebration of the planes, and so basically, when we get those, they go into the Heritage Fund, and then they're, when they're expended, they come out of the Heritage Fund. When we get these donations, our regulations require that the board accept them and also give approval to expend them. So that's what I'm here for this morning, to see if we can do that. What we've gotten so far is a $100 gift certificate from Market Basket. We've gotten this plastic ware from McDonald's, we got $100, or we will be getting $100 worth of goods from Walmart. We have a donation of $222 to sponsor the June 13 iconography gallery talk and gallery exhibit at the library. And then we will be getting some money from Edward Jones, but that's yet to be determined. It all depends on what our remaining needs are, so they said they would be glad to help us with that. So what we'd like to do is have you all accept those donations, and then at the same time, give us the authority to expend the money that came from those donations.
And I believe that's the process that we agreed upon when you came to us a month or so ago and said that this was gonna be happening, and I believe the board was okay with that process at that time. So, question from the board, or?
Is this beyond what you have budgeted for the event? These are extra stuff for the, okay. So it's not just your budgetary items, these are in addition to? Okay, I have objections.
Ellen?
No, no objections.
Then a motion would be in order to authorize acceptance of those donations and authorization to expend them. Motion by Ellie, second by Ellen. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous.
Great, thank you. Just, I can add a couple of things. Just wanna remind the departments and boards and committees that, to have folks sign up for the tours, if they haven't signed up and if they're interested in going, because we're trying to have a handle on how many people are actually going to show up so that we can keep the tours to be reasonable and so that everybody enjoys the tours. So if you could just let your folks know, it'd be nice to have them sign up ahead of time if they're interested in coming to that. Also, we have an organizational table there for organizational information. If boards or committees or any of the departments have something that they want to share with the public, we have a table there where they can give us that information, we'll have it on the table to share with the general public, whoever is there at that time, brochures, announcements, whatever, anything of that nature would be great. Other than that, I think we're, we're getting there.
Praying for good weather.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Everybody should do that, the more prayers are done, that's it.
Ernie, do you have a deadline by which you are asking people to sign up by? Sometimes if people know there's a deadline, they won't wait until the last minute.
We can have a deadline, just whenever they're, and actually, what, we have a certain number in mind, as far as something people would be good, but if people show up on that day and we don't have 100 people for a tour, then we're probably, we're just gonna say, yeah, that's fine. We're just trying to get an idea of where we're going, so that we don't have an overload on one tour, and make it less enjoyable. So, yeah, they can sign up right until we're there yet.
It's a crowd management tool.
There you go.
There. Anticipating crowds.
Right.
That's what we want. Right, right. Thanks, Ernie. Okay, any other boards or committees? Rick, no? Okay. I will mention, under my liaison report, I'll just do a quick report out from Energy Committee. Okay, department heads, Graham?
You always start this way, I'm gonna sit over there next to you.
Oh, tell you what.
No, no, I'm ready, I'm ready.
No, you can relax, you can relax.
Tom's still working on stuff.
Tom, Tom, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right.
We'll, we'll, we'll let you relax.
Go ahead, Tom.
Am I going out?
You are.
I wasn't listening, if you hadn't noticed. All right. So the, what's been going on, preambulations are being scheduled, Exeter was complete last, a couple weeks ago, Brentwood's complete the previous year. So we're trying to schedule those with the, the other towns. We have, probably next month, I think, when we're sure we're not gonna need the heat, we'll be removing the oil tank. Irving's been dragging their feet, they haven't been here yet to, I'm assuming they're gonna want it over there, but I have to meet with them, and we'll get that in. And then, I've got one bid in for the furnace replacement, and we'll have to replace the oil fired with propane. We're not gonna do the duct work, we're just gonna, until things are settled where we're, I don't wanna do duct work and then renovate the building. So that will, and the AC won't be affected down there, so, so everything, because that just, that does heat only, that is heat AC. You might have a day or two without AC when they're working on that one. So, the railings, that'll be today.
On what date?
Noon time today, out front. All parties involved will be discussing the railings, they're bringing one of them with them. The Main Street Bridge Grant is still in progress, it's very slow. Thursday at noon, there'll be a site visit with some parties involved, if any of the Select Board are welcome to show up. The library's 95% done. Interior's done, exterior just needs paint, they decided at the end of last week. That's coming along, and we've been doing our, getting, getting ready for the Memorial Day, flags, and gazebo is gonna be dressed up, and get the, the trailer for the vets for the parade, working on that. And other than that, it's just drainage work, trimming, tree, some tree work, your ongoing maintenance, and that's about it.
So I have a question, Tom. When the oil tank comes out, will a propane tank go in?
It has to be, I believe, minimum 10 feet from the building, so I can't sit there, don't really, can't go in the parking lot. So I think that, and that's why I'm waiting for Irving, there, there is, they must be a organization too, because, so, we're thinking over there. Size-wise, I'm depending on them to, you know, what's needed. I don't think, I've talked to Dave Fields and, and the other gentleman bidding on the furnace, they, we can do it off one tank and, and, you know, across the ceiling with the, with the gas. And so I'm gonna assume it's there, is the spot on the Grace Daley lawn, will obviously have to trench it across. And then I, I'm hoping we'll, if that's, we'll think it through, but if that's gonna be the final trenching, I hope to resurface the whole parking lot at the end of the season. That's my, my wish. If we're not, but I wanna make sure we're done digging trenches and all that fun stuff.
So when you say on the Grace Daley property, where would the tank be located?
Well, we're, I'm, I'm guessing we're going to, it's probably gonna be off the, off the
Pavement.
Pavement, I would say a good 10, 12 feet, just to be, and we're gonna have to do something around it, bollards, so, plowing, we're not gonna, not, not the top of a, yeah, it's, it's very limited, there's no place on this side it can go, because you've got septic, boundary's close, back really doesn't suit anything, that's the only open space that we can, that I can see, and maybe there'll be some other ideas.
Will it be underground?
Yeah.
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 So the part that will stick up is the
Yeah, just the cover part. Yeah. So, so we'll have to be cautious and think that through, because that is, snow goes, you know, I'd rather not have it where you, a loader could, but there's, like I said, there's limited, and they may have some other ideas that I haven't thought of, but that's the only place that I can reasonably think that it would go.
Okay. Any other questions, Rick? Tom? Okay, thanks, Tom. Pedro?
Hi, good morning, members of the board. So last, last week, we, I, as I was doing my, my rounds, going for inspections, I encountered twelve properties that were working without a permit, and the board will need to make a decision on this matter to the extent of ordinance, Article 1000, Section 1000, 1008.7, states that when there is a violation to the building portion of the ordinance, fees should be trebled. With the scheduled fees, right now, we're talking that a violation of that kind can go very easily into the $1,000 immediately. I believe that there is room for us to say, well, first offender, let's make him pay twice, you got to pay something, because you were working without proper permits, and then if you repeat, at that point, we're not bending or breaking for them, making the fees treble to what the ordinance state. But again, there were 12 properties. One of the property owners called me this morning because she felt the fee was high, she was rebuilding a deck, the cost was $210, it came to $615.75. She felt that it was killing her budget, that if we can do a deduction, I'd say I will run it to the board today to see if they want to probably double, because the system won't allow to go any less than double. The system is already created, so that is automated. When I go and I snap a picture, saying that there is a violation, the, the, the system will actually recognize town ordinances and apply those ordinances to the, to the permit. So that's something that the board might need to, whether or not say yea or nay on that.
So the question you're asking is whether we would authorize you to, say, in a first offense, not do triple
Yes.
penalties, but something less than that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because, I mean, it's going really high rampant, really high immediately. And I understand that, that at the end, the idea is not to burden the residents with more fees, but to make the contractors do the things right. On the other hand, that is working very nicely, is the fact that if the contractor has done, has gone through any type of violation, the system is recording that violation, which allows the resident to actually research the contractor database in the system and see what has happened with them. It won't go into deep details, but it will say that this contractor had these violations in the past two, three years. And they will allow the, the residents to make a really good decision on who they are hiring, and making sure that who they hire knows the rules of the town and abide by the rules of the town. But again, like I said, we get 12 properties of those last week, and I'm working on those, and I just need an answer with regards to the fee, if the, if the board will be okay on reducing the first offense, with regards to the fees.
I, I, I think I have several questions. So the fees, the violation fees are double or triple the permit fee? What's being doubled and tripled?
Yes. The permit fee gets trebled per ordinance, that's town ordinance, that's not scheduled fees, that's the ordinance that requests that when there is a violation to the ordinance, and there is fee involved in that violation, in the building department permit fees, those fees will be trebled per violation.
Is that posted, so
That's the town ordinance.
That's not my question. Is that posted, so when people are applying, they understand? Because people aren't gonna know to look at ordinance 1008 to look for, so are we notifying folks that if you're in violation, this is what you're looking up?
It is a responsibility of the contractor
I'm sorry?
It is the responsibility of the contractor to understand the town ordinance, it's part of the building permitting process.
Well, these, these, these are, correct me if I'm wrong, these are instances that you've found that no permit had been pulled at all?
They have applied.
Oh, they did?
They have applied.
But didn't receive the permit?
They hadn't got the permit, I submitted a change of request, because the information submitted does not comply with building code.
Okay.
And it's contractors, it's not the residents, it's actually
But who's paying for it? It's the, the resident that's end up paying.
At the end, the contractor is passing
It's the resident that ends up paying. So, so is it, I'll go back to my question, is it, are we posting it, other than it, I know it's in an ordinance, but a resident doesn't know to go look at this ordinance, that they're gonna be charged triple? Right? So are we just, can we post something that says, when you are applying for a permit, please beware, blah, 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 so that they know to make sure that nothing starts before the permit's approved? Right? Because that sounds like it's part of the problem, work started prior to the permit being approved, right?
Yes. And that is, I understand your question, however, the town is very open to, to those questions, and residents are being informed on calls, and also when they contact me, that working without a permit does infringe into a violation of the town ordinance.
But that sounds like it's after the, after the fact. They're calling you after the fact.
They are calling me before.
So this, this lady, would the deck knew?
As a matter of fact, this, this lady, the contractor knew, ahead of, way ahead of time. So he chose to do the work regardless of the knowledge, and now he's passing it to the resident. And the, I, I understand, at the end, I tell the resident, I'm not here to make you pay, but it is a responsibility of your contractor to make sure that after we talk and I give him the information, he abide by that information.
Ellie?
I guess I'd have to say I'm not in favor of being lenient, and, and I'll tell you why. We have so many instances throughout town where we let things go, permits were not issued or even, were never even applied for, never mind issued, and even then, they're still ignored, and I just assume we draw the line in the sand now, and saying, we've got a, a person like yourself, a building inspector, code enforcement, that is looking at all construction in town, and we're gonna make it safe for all of us to live carefully in town. I'm not in favor of giving them a break, absolutely not. We've done too many breaks over the last however many years, so.
Did you shut the projects down?
I post a legal stop work order on the, on site, and I, those are the things, so when I'm going through the town doing inspections, if I see something, I will stop. Last week, like I said, there were 12 instances that I stopped, and I either have spoken with the contractor, or the contractor was just blandly doing the work without permit, and they have previously pulled permits on the town, in the town, within the town. So I go in, in the site, and I have with, in my truck, legal stop work orders, and I post it with the, the articles and the building code that I'm referencing, to snap a picture and put it in the cloud system, cloud permit system, and immediately that flagged the, the address, so when they pull the permit, immediately it's gonna be automatically trebled.
So you've done that for somebody, whether they pulled the permit, or whether they just was working without a permit at all?
Yes.
I mean, they're all working
Either or, they're working without permit.
I, I agree with Ellie about the fine and everything, I just wish that somehow it wasn't gonna impact the resident, because a lot of residents will say because a lot of residents will say to the contractor, don't forget you have to pull a permit. And then the contractor says, oh, I pulled the permit, and they've actually lied to the resident, and then they're gonna push their fine onto the resident, and
Five of those 12 instances were that same case.
You know, and that seems punitive to the resident who, you know, thought the process was going through.
The biggest issue we have, and that's statewide, is that there is no requirement for a contractor to have some sort of registration or permit through the state to perform work within the state, unlike the state of Mass and the state of Rhode Island, that you are required to be a registered contractor to do work in those states. And it is what it is, somehow it is the nature of the state. But there is no way you can fade out that that cost is not gonna be end up paid by the resident.
No, I get it, I just
But by the same token, you draw those lines in the sand, the contractors will get it. People will get it, you have to start somewhere.
And then there is
Well, can we finish with this topic before we go to the next one? Because I'd like to get you an answer, so that you can move forward. And I mean, we've had the discussion, I mean, what's the feeling of the board? Stick with the rule as the ordinance states, or to grant the building inspector some latitude?
Have any of these people put the request in writing to reduce the fine?
No, they, I received four calls this morning, that I dealt with. All four residents requested that, please, on this occasion, because the contractor is making them responsible for paying the fees, if the, if I can do something, I said, well, I have to pass it through the board, I mean, it is not something that I wanna just put my name and sign to it, that yes, I'll do something for you. I believe it is a directive of the select board to make that determination.
To go along with that, I think, I don't feel comfortable making a decision because I don't feel like I have enough information. So I would wanna see a formal request from the resident, just like if you do, a tax abatement, whatever, to say, can you waive these fees, or whatever, so I think I would want more information for each instance before I can say yes or no.
The system is built also, so that you are aware, the system is built on a wiggle room that will allow to reduce, like, a portion of the fee, you won't be able to do the full reduction of the violation of the fee.
What, just, why? Why wouldn't we be able to? Just because the software says that, but why wouldn't we have
No, that's the ordinance that says it, the software captured the ordinance.
What ordinance are we quoting?
Big Bang.
What ordinance, what's the number?
It's Article 1000, I believe it's Section 1008.7.
1000 and what?
1008.7.
I think we need, I need more information before I can make a decision.
I'm gonna make a motion not to waive it, not to do a general waiver for everybody, and then if we have individuals who wish to request something from the board, they can put it in writing and we can address it individually.
So that's a motion?
Second.
Ellie, you started too, but
That's fine, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I'm very uncomfortable with doing a blanket waiver, so.
So further, I'm sorry, further discussion?
To not write any waivers.
Correct.
Right, and that if there are special cases, they would come to presumably the building inspector and us eventually, I would imagine, in writing.
Right.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Extensions? Carries unanimously, okay. Pedro, are you clear on that?
Yes.
Okay.
So already. And last but not least, is volume on the department, we're creating a little bit of a backlog with regards to the contract registration, that's not my top priority, my top priority right now is permitting, making sure our permits are going and reviewing them, I'm complying with RSA, that I have 30 days to make sure that I can review and render an answer for the permit is approved, denied, or need modifications. We got so far, between the, this month, we got 32 pending applications and 16 new applications as of this week. Phone call volume steady, hasn't risen too much. I believe it's expected, but we're having busy, like as always, but that's what we're working with.
Just one question for me, it's not a question really, just a, just an update for folks. I know that you're not prepared to address the issue with the excavation site at Torre Mayo's, because that's still underway, Peter is working with you and Glenn Greenwood on that, eventually to bring a report back to the board on compliance. So I just wanna make sure, especially if people are watching, it's been a few weeks now since we've had a discussion about that. The board did a, did a site walk a few weeks back, and around the perimeter, part of the, near the, you know, the berm area. And there were some questions, and so we just wanted to make sure that the site was checked for compliance, so.
Yes, so with regards to that, I actually was talking with Peter, and we keep some updates on that. We spoke with, I don't have his last name, but his name is CJ. He is the manager for the site. We spoke with him about two weeks ago. We referred to the minutes that were recorded with Mr. Torre Mayo stating on those minutes that he was gonna do a vegetated berm. It is his view that it was never agreed upon, there is nothing in writing from his grandfather to say that he was gonna plant any trees there. They committed to the berm, they also stated that nobody's driving on that berm, that if somebody saw a truck there, they saw it when they were building the berm, nothing after because of liability. They cannot get anything on the, on top of that berm, because it's a free fall to about 300 feet down to the ground, where they have that berm. And their insurance and their attorneys told them that nobody can be driving on that berm. So that was his stance, I told him that I was gonna follow suit with regards to, with the information that I have with a letter, and that he will need to answer to that letter at some point, so we're gonna be waiting for an answer on that letter.
So you, okay, I mean, one of the issues that the residents had was the, whether or not the berm was within the setback area of the lot lines, their lot lines, and there's a question about that, so some determination's gonna need to be made to make sure that they are in compliance with the setback. That was one of the issues.
I, for what I read on the information on the minutes and the communication that was sent, the, out the most delineated issue was the fact of the excavation, with, close, close to the 50-foot setback required by the state from any property line. They are stating that they're holding themselves not to be excavated within those 50 feet of any property line. And they are making sure that they don't do any excavation within 150 feet of any property, which is per the RSA that governs their working situation down there. But again, we send them the letter that stating what it is required from the town, the, based on the minutes that were attached to that letter and the communication that we have. So we're gonna be waiting for an answer on that.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I know when Peter is back with us, he's, he's working on this as well.
He's gonna have more details as well.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Anything else, Pedro?
No.
Marissa?
Hello, everyone, I appreciate everyone's support and patience as I learn the ropes. I am working on reconciling accounts, kinda getting familiar with everything, I've been meeting with departments. Last week, I actually met with Partners Bank too, to make sure I had everything straight, I'm gonna be making an appointment with TD Bank as well, because we hold accounts in both. I'm meeting with Robin, Kelly at the fire department, and Tammy this week. And then I'm working with Abby about camp and financial analysis, which I will be giving to you guys shortly. I have been working with Mari as well, the treasurer, because she expressed some concern about her duties and what she's supposed to be doing, so we, we're talking about the RSAs now. I sent them to her today, and then I might have to come back to you guys, maybe her and I would talk to you about who's doing what, and make sure everything is spelled out the way that she's comfortable. And the New Hampshire retirement system audit is due Wednesday, and I'm working on that now. That's it.
Well, first of all, again, welcome in the new spot, we appreciate you taking that on, and I know you're kind of excited about it, so this is a good thing.
Yeah.
Also, the human resources component of that function was not part of your role. It's strictly the finance piece. But you are helping out as best you can in the transition until we get the human resources piece sort of settled and figured out.
Absolutely.
So we appreciate your help with that as well.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, because we have one new employee potentially for the fire department, and also the camp counselors are gonna be signing up soon too, so I'm on that as well.
And if you, I mentioned this to you when I saw you the other day, it's a lot to take on in the new position, and rather than you holding everything in and waiting until you're ready to explode, please say something.
I will, yeah, I will.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Marissa?
Just welcome aboard, glad you're doing more for our town, you've been great in the human services, so
Thank you.
Expect nothing less than the other side of the doll.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Tammy?
So, we received the warrant for the taxes last week. They have been stuffed, printed and stuffed, they're going to the post office today, they will be due July 1st. The deeding, we had four properties up for deeding, all but one have paid, I have spoken with her directly. She says she will be paying it off before the deadline, so hopefully we won't have to talk about deeding anymore this year.
Good.
I leaned 40 properties last week, so that's 24 taxes that weren't paid. Any portion of those taxes aren't paid, now there is a lien on that, those 40 properties. We have 310 overdue dogs, and the animal control officer is hard at work contacting those dog owners. We did have the DMV audit last week, which there was no issues at all, they, they come in, actually account every single plate we have, every single decal, all of our supplies to make sure, and they'll say, you're missing this decal from 24, and we have to figure out where it is, but I don't know, she didn't have it missing. And then lastly, I think most of you have seen this, but these are our old town records that have to be kept permanently, and this is the shape that they're in, and I go to Grant last year, and I got three of these done, and then one through our budget, and I'm gonna hopefully do the same this year, but if you wanna come take a look, it's very impressive, they encapsulate each page and bind it in this nice sturdy binder, and hopefully someday that whole rack will be filled with books.
How many do you have down there to do?
I'd say about 30.
Okay.
And they're, they run from two to three and a half, four grand a book.
Well, I can see why, it's taking something that's
Right, and they, and they digitize everything, so it'll be all online, so people don't have to come in and actually handle this.
Well, when I asked you that question, I'm glad that they did that, because, you know, to have those electronically and accessible to anyone who wants to see them, rather than having to, I mean, looking at the books is really cool.
It is, yeah.
But if you need something quickly and you just need to access it, I mean, being able to go online is great.
What year does that one, not the redone one, but the
This one, it's 1708 to 1750.
Wow.
I just really wanna commend Tammy for doing this, it was, it's an amazing project. And this is not anything that's technically she had to do, so the fact that she went and got her grant and did all this and is continuing the project, I think is fabulous, it's an amazing, it's an amazing project.
Thank you, we're gonna, you know, try to get, and hopefully just keep doing it every year until they're all done, so. We probably, none of us will be here at that time.
Probably true. Anything else, Tammy? Questions for Tammy? Thank you. Now, great.
Last but not least.
You've had plenty of time to think.
Yes, thank you, welcome, Marissa. So, I'll just get right into it, I've had one employee out for about a month and a half now on injury, the injury did not occur at work, but so like the police department, we've had to backfill that with overtime, so I'll keep monitoring my overtime and let you guys know where we're at, we're about, almost halfway through my overtime budget, but it's almost June, so we're not too far behind. We've been busy with medical calls, last week we had two structure fires, both structures were saved. I don't anticipate either structure being demolished and should be able to repair, so that was good. It was a great stop by both crews on each day. Placed ALS continues to serve Kingston in assistance with paramedic level calls for service. Wednesday morning, attempting to go to the State House, the governor apparently is commending the working group for the finding a solution, I guess, and creating, or not creating a public health crisis. So that's Wednesday at 10 o'clock. Last thing I have is the two new paramedic firefighter positions, I posted for them last month. We had four applications, two were paramedics, both paramedics decided not to interview. One took another job elsewhere, and the other one is leaving the fire service for good, so I have reposted that, thank you to Susan for Indeed, and Caitlin for the website, and I posted on the Fire Academy's website, so I'll keep you updated with those, but, and it's not Kingston, it's the whole state, you know, it's, there's just not enough people out there that want jobs in this service, same thing with police as well, Group 2 Retirement was adjusted, not in the beneficiary of the employee about 10 years ago, but House Bill 2 is in the Senate right now. Governor Ayotte is pushing to change those benefits back, so I'm hopeful for that. That's all I have.
Great, so the, the regional ALS service is working as planned?
Yep, so we have monthly meetings, mostly there in Kingston, so on Wednesday mornings, if you see a bunch of Tahoe's there, that's what we're doing. So we met last week, right now we're being billed, same as what we were with Extra ALS, that's for the first year. The fire chief in Placedale, Chris, he's hopeful, pretty sure that he has 80% of next year's budget covered with donations.
80% already?
Yep.
That's good news.
So there is gonna be a fee per town, but to cover that 20%, and I actually suggested that maybe we cover like 25%, just so that we can build up that, that budget in anticipation if towns backed out at some point, or whatever, so we can keep that program going as long as possible, so.
You mentioned that we had a couple of the ALS response in Kingston, do we, I mean, how, like a handful, like, is it, how much are we using that service, as opposed to just being part of the service?
So we have about 10 bills, so we only get billed if they transport.
Okay.
But I'm guessing they've probably been to Kingston since they started a little over a month ago, probably 15, 20 times.
And we've been billed 10 times?
Yes, because we only get billed, so we did actually catch one bill that they, they didn't know that they didn't transport.
Okay.
So after Kelly looked at it, and we went kinda back and forth, we took care of that.
Because I think that's a really good number, you know, to know that, to have our own paramedics, right, like, we actually we're using it a lot, so we really do need that here.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
So Ellie and I are laughing here, and that's probably not good because the, the microphone's on, but
You can laugh at me all you want.
Our, our thought was, well, what happened to the patients, did they go flying out the back of the, and are they lost, you know?
Was it oopsie?
Anyway.
It's been a long time since we did that.
Yeah.
Thank goodness.
That's good.
It happens.
Any que, thank you, any questions for the chief? Okay, thank you. All right, any last comments from department heads or All right, any last comments from department heads or board committees before we move on to board business?
I had one. Add to the general discussion.
Okay.
I just want to let you know, there was a problem with my email over the weekend from Friday night, all night through Saturday morning. I was getting these weird emails, mail delivery system, undeliverable messages, like 40 altogether. Like, every 15 or 20 minutes, one came in. So I did call Block 5 in the morning, because I didn't know if my computer was getting eaten alive or what. They checked into it. There was no danger to my email account or to the server. He had to block these types of junk messages. They're bouncing back because of my admin account. It's kind of a junk collector. So he's fixed that for the entire town. Those will be blocked. But he did remind me that I should get rid of that admin account, which I tried to do a while back. They're both active right now, but I'm going to be switching to just S Air at Kingston and H to be consistent with everyone else. So I'm going to, I'll put out messaging about that to make sure I don't lose any, any messages. But the other thing he did say is that we should once again be considering changing our, what is it, a domain, from dot com to dot gov. And I know we talked about it briefly in the past. It'd be kind of a headache and it'll cost money, so it's just another layer of security.
Well, actually, we're currently at dot org, I believe.
Did I say dot? Yeah, dot org to dot gov.
To dot gov.
What benefit does that give us?
Extra layer of security. I don't know how, but.
Then we should budget for next year.
Yeah, I can find out more about it, what it's going to cost and.
Just plan it as part of the budget for next year.
But also, I'd like to know what added security going from dot org to dot gov allows.
What does it gain us?
What does it gain us, and then clearly the cost of that? And then how, yeah, that would be a whole migration thing, which.
I'll get some information from them, and we can go forward after that.
So you'll report back to us, Susan?
Yep.
On that?
That's all.
Thank you.
While everybody's here, just that, I haven't had this confirmed yet, but the last I knew, the auditors are coming the first week in June. I think it's the second, third, and fourth, so I wanted everybody to know in case Marissa closes the door and doesn't answer any of your calls. She may be being overloaded, I don't know. And for any other department that may be impacted by the audit, to let them know that that may be coming. And that next Wednesday is the first meeting of the group where we close it, we close the building, but it doesn't open until 9:00 that day. That's next Wednesday.
Is that posted? Is it going to post that somewhere so people, so the public knows?
Definitely. I don't know if it's on the website yet, but we'll make sure.
Yeah, that's one of the checkpoints.
And the door and everywhere we can think of.
So next Wednesday, don't open until 9:00?
Right.
Okay.
That's where we are. That's it.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we'll, we'll move on to public comment number one.
Laura?
Can I ask you something? What are we doing these days on the floor? Have a question for you. Okay.
And we'll be doing that shortly. Okay, no public comment. We have no appointments, and we'll get into liaison reports. And Lori, since you have something for Pedro.
Okay.
We'll start with you.
So, from the HDC meeting, so for people who are unfamiliar with the process, if you live in one of the historic districts, if you want to do something to your property, you have to go to the historic district and get a certificate of approval. And then some stuff requires a permit, some stuff does not. So, you know, Pedro is very looped into that process. The certificate of approval is very specific. So if you say you want to put a white fence up, and it's going to look like this, and it's going to be four foot high, and you change it to five foot high, and it's going to look like that, you have to get a whole nother certificate. So the conversation last week was, it was mostly involving one of the houses here on Main Street where it's not code violations, and it wasn't in the certificate, but for example, they put all of the electrical panels on the outside of the house, and it's very unsightly, right? Or the septic, the candy cane, right? So the question is, if in the certificate of approval, and they say, yes, your septic's going to be located in the front, and your, the candy cane's in the front, but you need to put shrubs around it to minimize, you know, to make it look aesthetically pleasing. If they don't do that, and it's not a code violation, right? Like, the HDC is not an enforcement arm.
Correct.
But not putting shrubs around your candy cane is not a code violation. So how do we, the discussion was, how do we loop in, so when you're going and you're, how do we stop it so they don't put the electrical panels on the front? Because again, that's not a code violation, right? Like, it's fine, but once it's installed, it's too late to fix it. So the conversation is, how do we loop in with the building inspector to get, hold on for a second, to get like on a checklist of as they're going along, you know? And it's early conversations, because we can't fix that stuff after the fact. We're not an enforcement arm. We can't levy fines. They're not code violations, but they're not, it doesn't look aesthetically pleasing for the historic district.
It is a violation of their certificate of approval, however.
Yes.
And does that certificate have a section that talks about compliance or whatever?
Not really. And that's the thing, right? And even if they weren't compliant, we can't levy fines, because it's not clearly laid out. So we don't know how that loops in with the building inspector.
So there is no, nothing that code enforcement can do or building can do. However, if it's my suggestion, the HDC can request open approval of that condition or an approval that's not, does not require a building permit, like a fence. If the fence is not higher than seven feet, they can put the fence, it's not my business.
Right.
So, but the HDC can actually suggest that they can get a performance bond for those instances where there is not enforcement on.
Get a what?
Performance bond.
Okay.
So that if, if they build something that isn't in the approved certificate, the town will then be able to.
Finalize.
Tap into resources to make it correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Who would determine that?
Well, the HDC would need to do it.
Yep.
I have a question, though.
Yeah.
If the, if the HDC has made an approval based on certain recommendations, why isn't that the building inspector doesn't have that information so when he's going through the approval process, he doesn't have something that says, "This can't go in the front, so move it."
Right.
I don't understand why, I mean, there used to be, the, the building inspector used to be able to get the information from the HDC on the certificate of approval.
Right.
With the requirements and make sure the requirements are met. So why can't that happen?
So part of it is, for this house, for example, they couldn't put the septic anywhere but the front. They just couldn't. That had to be where, so it's not like, it's more about, it looks awful, and can you, can you put something around it, right? Or the electric in the front, like, all of those panels are on the house. That's not a code violation. So how do we, do we say?
It's a violation of the approval.
Not, no, because we wouldn't, like, the whole thing is, we, we don't know until it's too late. So how do you put on that, on the certificate of approval, if you're doing a major renovation that could require more electrical, you can't put your panels in the front? Like, it's, you know, it's a hard kind of nut to crack here, because we don't know until it's too late, and then you can't fix it, but it's not a code violation, so we can't say, and it wasn't on their certificate of approval.
So it wasn't reviewed by the HDC at all?
Yes.
That, that, where the panels would go was not reviewed by the HDC.
Nope, because we didn't think we had to, right? So, you know what I mean? You, you put a warning label on after something has happened.
Sounds like a lesson learned.
Well, yeah.
So we don't have those again. It's like, how do we coordinate? Is, you know, I, I think you get copies of the certificates.
I do get copies of the certificate, and as a matter of fact, when there is a building that is being developed within the performance district or the historic district.
Yeah.
The cloud permit, fly it, and therefore immediately make a, Susan Preska is one of the person that has to approve the permit.
Right.
To make sure that what they submit and the approval that the HDC has granted meet.
Yep.
If there is deviation because of site, HDC is an aesthetic committee.
Yep.
It's not a safety. There is nothing that, I cannot go because the, the committee feels that it doesn't look in tandem with all the properties that pertain to the historic district. I can just not go to somebody, well, it's wrong.
Yep.
It's not a code violation. We cannot, there is no other say that will kind of protect the town of me saying, "You got to do it the right way," because that is not, it's not a code violation. It's not a safety issue.
Well, that's true, but, but.
It's an ordinance.
But don't you have the ability to enforce what's in the certificate of approval?
No.
Because somebody has to enforce that.
But it's not a, if it's not a health and safety issue, how would he enforce it? In the past, the members of the HDC kind of patrol the planes and did so accordingly.
But the, but the thing is, if they notice it, say it's in their certificate of approval, and they don't do it, the HDC is not a, not an enforcement body.
Correct.
So then we'd have to go to code enforcement, but if it's not a code violation, and it's just a.
They come to the board of selectmen, they're the enforcement body of the town, and if the HDC granted an approval based on ordinances we have adopted, and somebody was supposed to do it and they didn't, then it's up to the board of selectmen to be able to enforce it.
If our bill, and I thought, you're right, and I thought, though, that, that we have essentially delegated our enforcement responsibilities to our building inspector code enforcement officer.
Yep.
If there are pieces of that, though, that, that he cannot do.
Yep.
And this is one of them.
And this is one of them.
Then, then it comes to us. You're right.
Now, the thing about the things on the front.
Yeah.
The electric panels.
Yeah.
In my opinion, that's too bad, because nobody told them they couldn't.
Right, exactly.
No, and you're agreeing with that, but the thing about, well, we'll approve this because we understand this is the only way you have to do it.
Yeah.
But part of it, because you're in the HDC, is you got to plant some shrubs around it. That's all we're asking you.
Right.
If they didn't, they used to not be able to get a final approval.
A final approval of what?
Well, of either the septic system.
That is, that is another thing. For example, 184 Main Street.
Yeah.
The duplex.
Yeah.
If they do something that does not conform to the HDC approval, I won't be able to issue the CO until the HDC sign off on the inspection report. So that is, that is a roadblock on that end. The problem is when it's something that the building department is not even involved.
Exactly.
So my only suggestion, there will be, again, a performance bond, so that at least the committee has some way to tackle, this is going to cost you out of your performance bond.
Right.
And it's just going to, that's just going to put a burden on, on the developer, because that bond is going to increase on prices violation, as many violations they get.
Right.
But, again, if it is something that, like I said, something big, a big project.
Yep.
The new apartments are going to go across from Baker School and all that thing, there is a way of me blocking the final CO, because I can, I set up the inspections, and at the end, the HDC is one of them. And they have to go, they have to make sure that everything is said as they want.
So the HDC has to be more diligent in the future, being detailed in the certificate of approval, so that way, if it's in there, then we can do all of that. But if it's not in there.
Right.
The homeowner didn't do anything wrong, because we didn't say you couldn't do it.
Right.
And it's not a code violation. It's, okay, all right, I think I got it.
I mean, the easy fix would be the, the candy cane. I mean, do they, did you, did this HDC tell them that they really need to put the shrub or shrubs around it, and they said, "Forget about it"?
No, we just, this is totally an after the fact.
Oh, it's an after.
And for example, like, you put your heating elements outside, like, put a fence around it. So, so it's, it's like.
Right. But a burn house over the chain, I get it, I get it.
Yeah, so it's about preventing it in the future, and then making sure that what legal standing do we have to fix something with the HDC not being that enforcement.
And in answering the, the question that, or the comment that Ellen stated, that if it is part of the ordinance, the ordinance state that the HDC have to review the application. It doesn't lay down a set of conditions to be met.
Yep.
The conditions are set forth by the HDC based on the criteria of design, historical elements that they want to preserve, and things of that nature. But again, they are not a safety hazard. There is no, nothing that can set up an arm of enforcement per se.
Yep. Okay, great, thank you. You'll probably have more conversations about this with Virginia or Susan.
Most definitely.
To see if we need to change our application process to include that stuff, but, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Pedro. Lori, did you have anything else on liaison?
Rec committee stuff, but most of that is for non-public. Though we do have a question about the laptops. So the director's laptop is not working great, and we know that laptops were ordered through the budget process in ARPA, but we don't know the status of that, and we don't know if she was supposed to be getting one.
The ones through ARPA, were they for the inspectors?
I'm pretty sure they were. They were not for the rec.
I'm sure not. But we, but some budgets have in there, like, refresh for laptops and stuff, so we, we need to figure that part out. Because her laptop is, keeps dying and rebooting itself.
Let's see where she is on the rotation.
I'm, I'm pretty sure whatever laptops we were able to purchase have already been distributed.
Ah.
So there's none, as far as I know, there is none available this time.
All right, we'll have to check the budget.
We should probably check to see if there's somewhere noted in a replacement schedule for PCs.
There used to be a replacement schedule for each.
There is, there is.
There is a replacement schedule.
We just need to find that and figure it, figure out where.
It may not be on the schedule yet.
Yeah, great.
Yes.
Yeah, that was it.
Okay. All right, thank you. A couple of things for me, and I'll just update the energy committee issue, and Rick, if you have anything else to add, feel free to come on up. The energy committee met for the first time in several months, because there really hadn't been a lot of stuff to discuss, but the chair called a meeting this past week, and we had a representative from Revision Energy come in to give us an update on where their process is with regard to the investigation of a possible solar field on the closed landfill. And so, I mean, the short story is that they're, that they're still proceeding, they're, they're, they're discussing with investors, they're still discussing with Unitil regarding the interconnection costs, you know, of how they get the electricity from the landfill into the grid, and depending on the size of the system determines, is going to determine how costly it's going to be. It all gets put into a big matrix, and, and in the end, you come out with some possibilities of sizes of systems and what they cost and what the benefits would end up being for us and so forth. So their revision is hoping to have something that the select board can consider late summer or into the early fall. So I don't have any more specific information than that. And the idea would be that if they come back to us with something that appears to be a feasible proposal and a feasible system size and so forth, then it would be up to us to consider at that point whether we wanted to put it on for a warrant article for 2026. Okay? Rick? Yep, figured I'd miss something. Yep, figured I'd miss something. Okay, thanks, Rick. Couple of quick things. I did some follow-up on two items. I'm doing them here, they're not particularly liaison, but just, just to update you with regard to the loan tree situation. I reached out to council and they're in the process of drafting and, and dealing with the appropriate legal action.
Soon?
Yes, yes. It's underway.
Thank you.
Yes. And Susan and I have been working to reach out to a source that would be able to give us an estimate of what the repair work for the cupola on this would be on the, on the town hall, just so that we have at least a ballpark number that we could plug into the CIP. I mean, it's probably not going to be near term, but we, it's important enough and it's, it was noted on SMP's report to us that that was kind of a critical item because it's causing possible damage to the building and leaking and so forth. So, and it's going to be an expensive item, so it ought to be on the CIP. So this, an engineering firm will be doing a site visit?
Uh, yeah, I heard back from the engineering firm and he's going to reach out to some of the subcontractors and get back to us.
Okay, all right. And we'll, we'll certainly loop Tom Rowan in on that. And we'll keep you all posted. And I think that's all I had for that. Okay, Ellie. Your mic, please.
I don't have any reports for this week, but I do want to refer back to the RFQ for the solid waste contract that's due up for renewal in two years. I know Mr. Coombs wanted to have another attorney look at it, but I wanted to remind my colleagues that we had our own firm review the RFQ. They did make changes and included language that are more legalese, but the real issue will come after we've had the bidders conference and we will definitely need to have the contract even more finely tuned at that point. I, I cannot support another review of the RFQ now when we've just paid an firm to do it and all of a sudden now because it seems that the committee would like to see another pair of eyes. I don't know that we need anyone more qualified for this point of the procedure. We certainly will need to do all that review again after the bidders conference and then get input from the vendors and what they're looking for, and then we're going to have to release it as a proposal. So you have a lot more legal work coming up, so I feel like we'd be spending, throwing good money after bad. We've already got the legal review. I don't see where the holdup is. And unless the collection center or the solid waste group has more money or is willing to give up one of their flyers, I don't see it coming out of the selectance budget. At least I won't support it. Let's put it that way. We've reviewed it, it should be posted, we should get some feedback, meet with the contractors. It might be six months before we have a real proposal. So I, I've been thinking a lot about this and it's bothered me that this wasn't good enough, and I, I think it is.
What, let's see, it kind of came into this hallway through some of your discussions. So what has, what has the attorney reviewed?
The attorney reviewed the request for quotes and made recommendations and updates to it.
The one that came in that the committee had not sent? So that one was reviewed?
It, it was, and there were, and there was certain protective language for the town that was added by council. And then, and then following the last meeting where we discussed this, one of my tasks, and I didn't, didn't report back to you on it, but one of my tasks was to check to see if, if, if an arm of our council even had the ability to assist, if we wanted to reissue an RFQ or rewrite it, would they be able to do it? And the answer from them was no, they will review and comment back the way they did on that one. And so that was their, that was all they were able to do for us.
So my other question, I'm going to, my question is that if we had, I understand we don't want to use the one that was brought in because that wasn't the one that the committee approved, correct? Am I right on this pod so far?
The committee thinks there's missing information, so that we need to add more to it before it can be released to the public.
Okay.
Yeah.
But wasn't that a lot of, because I remember Phil thought that we should hire somebody specifically who was good with, you know, negotiating?
I, I think, so at the last meeting that we had, we went over the revised timeline, the discussion was that we should get professional help in drafting an RFQ. What that professional help looks like, it could be a volunteer from the community that has experience with contract language or experience with, that was the conversation. So that was the conversation that we brought to the select board, and that's what Phil said. That we need professional help in drafting the RFQ and developing a timeline that everybody can agree to. So what that looked like, so Glenn took the action to reach out to our council to see if they had in-house experience. They do not. They put it back to us and we have that, the board has that for action to look at other municipalities, just Googling RFQ gives you very standard language that we can plug and play, just kind of refine it to our needs, have a more flushed-out RFQ to release to the public.
So at this point, the group is going to take.
Yes.
Answer back.
Yes.
And you guys will come back to the board.
Yep.
And at this point, we haven't made a decision to send it to legal.
Correct. So, so once we re, once we redo it and add more information to it, because there was information that was missing out of the one that was originally drafted, we need to add more information. So before, it's good practice, before we release an RFQ to the public, we should make sure, you know, our council has reviewed it. So it's going to need to be done again before we release it because we are making changes to it. We are making, we're not releasing the one that was provided to us.
We, we, we don't need to address that now because it hasn't been brought back to us.
Correct.
And then we can figure that out when we get it. Okay. I understand your point, Ellie.
My point is that it's going to have to go back to council no matter what, once you have the bidders conference.
Right.
I don't know how much, I don't know what we're missing that, that some members of the committee thinks we're missing. I don't know.
But even once we do the RFQ, doesn't an RFP come next? No, feel the way around.
Doing an RFQ instead of an RFP.
I see, okay.
The difference.
I'm sorry, the thought being that it's a well-defined enough task.
Correct.
I see.
And an RFQ, the difference between a quote and a proposal is that we set the terms of the quote, that the, that the, the buyer, if you will, sets the parameters, whereas we'll use the current waste management contract. They set all the terms. And it came in so late, we had no other opportunities. I just want to avoid that. And I, I don't mean to be a pain about it, but I am, I, I remember what it was like when we really had no other choice. And there's an escalator clause in that current contract that chokes the town. I just want to avoid that.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Catch based on.
Ellen?
I don't remember. Conservation met, and I don't have my notes with me, they were doing a lot of things with trails and stuff. What I want to say about conservation is that the amount of knowledge that is in this volunteer group of everything that they do, I find just outstanding. I was just totally impressed by everything they're talking about and, and the management that they have to do for the trails and what they need to do and really the knowledge and the amount of hours that these people are volunteering, that people I don't think, think of as conservation, which is also a great deal of recreation for people in the town. I was just amazed when I, when, just listening to them all. And, and we've had a couple of meetings, but this particular one, I was awestruck by the amount of knowledge they all had. And I, I think that people probably don't recognize that. That was the first thing. The other thing is that I, I, we probably have to talk about part of this in non-public, possibly not all of it, but what we're going to do about HR. And we should probably talk about that at some point today. Excuse me. And at some point, we have to talk about, we have to contact our attorneys to find out what's holding up our audit from 2023. Because we, I got a draft. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Give me a second. We've been waiting for the audit for so long that I got a draft of it and I've been reviewing it a bit. And there are some things we need to talk about. There's.
Some findings?
There's some findings, but again, this isn't the final, so I don't want to talk about this in too much depth. Because I don't know what may or may not get changed from the final report. But, and some of the things are going to impact what we do or do not need for HR and things of that nature. But again, I don't want to get, at some point, we'll have to talk about this publicly, but I'm waiting for the final because I don't want to talk about stuff in the draft that may disappear once we get a final.
Right.
But apparently what we're waiting for is some sort of letter that our attorneys have to send. And we're heading towards June and we've been waiting since April to get the, they don't send to us, apparently they send to the auditors. I don't know what it's about, but, and, and I know you talked to the attorney.
You did.
You said that they had it, she had just come back from vacation, but.
And it was my impression that, that that was done or.
So, and if it is, I can, I can contact the auditors and say, what are you still waiting for? Because we're getting ready to do this one already and we haven't gotten the one from last year yet.
How about if you check with them, the auditors?
Sure.
If they don't have it yet, let me know.
Okay.
And I'll follow up and see where it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so as I say, this should be talked about publicly once we have the final.
Right.
That, that's about it. Oh, um, things are going just well in human services. I do think though, in all, in all honesty, because I'm in there for six weeks, I think it is, and I just have to confirm this because then I would like the board to, to follow up on this when we can, that the amount of money that's not being spent in there on salary for six weeks, I think we'll be able to get building and planning a few hours a week. And our person who's now doing our minutes said she'd be happy to take on that role because we're not using X amount of money in there. So while we can hire permanent people, you know, where, where Pedro was saying he's getting a little bit behind on things and every, the same thing's happening in planning, where Robin's being swamped with a lot of things, we may be able to.
It's the time of the year, it's building season, which means that both of those departments are overloaded now.
Right. But six weeks of not having to pay the person who is in there with the salary that this person gets, I think we'll be able to have more than enough to be able to assist those departments a little bit and giving them a little respite, if you will. Yeah.
Correct.
I did the math a little bit in my head, but I want to make sure before I spend money that I have the right numbers.
Did you, you probably already did engage the finance officer to calculate those?
I'm going to. I just wanted to pass it around in my own head first to see before I had, I asked her the numbers.
Right.
But I haven't written them down or stuff, so I think that will be able to help a little bit, those two departments, if the board thinks that would be something to pursue, look into it.
I think that's worth pursuing myself.
Anybody having any objection to? Okay, great, okay.
Objection to finding out the numbers or just moving forward?
Just to find out the numbers and then trying to move forward. But again, we don't meet again next week, so.
Right.
I don't have a problem moving forward, period. I trust your judgment of it. Verifying the numbers, then we can use that, reallocate for temporary help to get departments from drowning in their own paperwork.
I figured, you know, five hours a piece, it's in just 10 hours for the person, which it's, it more than covers it. I think it covers it almost for 12 weeks if we needed it to, but.
Oh, that would be a good thing to know. How long would it cover? How much is that saving going to last us?
By the end of the meeting, I could probably have that figured out. It's not a big math. Okay, that was about it. I just was trying to, both departments have been saying they've been having an issue, so I thought maybe this could help.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. Under old business, we have on here to review the compensation and benefits study. We, we received the, the responses to our RFP. And Susan has done some work to tabulate and do a little bit of comparison for us. And that's in your packets. So at this point, we have, we have six, yep, six respondents. They range, I mean, we went through this when we opened them, but they range from a low of 19,500 to a high of 45, I'm sorry, 54,575. Thoughts from folks?
I mean, I want to look at them a little bit more in depth. Susan did a great job of just starting this, but I, I know what we budgeted, but I don't know that, I, I don't want to go with the low bid just because it's the low bid, because it might not give us what we need.
And I have to say, to add to that, it's the only New Hampshire company, so they probably know enough to go look at our minutes when we approved it and have an idea what the budget is. Just saying.
And I mean, there's, you know, some of them, so I feel like clearly we need to look at these proposals a little bit more in depth and see, you know, make sure we're comparing apples to apples, but I do not want to just go by that bottom dollar. And if, say, for instance, we did one that was 10,000 more, you know, looking at the budget, where, where is their money? You know, and I don't want to keep going back to the well, that's not the answer either, but we shouldn't just take the bid because it's the bid.
Right. Plus, they're, they're, they're all from away, and I mean really away. So technically, they're really going to, they're going to do a statistical analysis. They're going to look up the numbers from comparable communities in New Hampshire, all done electronically. So we're not going to have a lot of interaction with them. And I don't know, they, I don't know that they know the disparities in duties, I mean, because everyone, because it's New Hampshire, everybody pitches in and helps.
Yeah.
So it's a catch-22. In some ways, you're almost better going with a New Hampshire-based company because they understand the duality of our roles in, in town municipal governments. So it's going to be a tough choice not to go with them, very honestly, never mind the price.
Well, I mean, price aside, if, if the one New Hampshire respondent did not provide a proposal that meets the terms of our request, well, that's, you know, that's different.
Right.
However, if it does meet all of the terms of our request, we probably would be more likely to do that or hard-press not to do that, but.
Exactly.
But if we, if we need to do some more analysis on it, then we should do that.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I, I definitely want to take a look at these because, you know, you just, I, I don't know what I don't know until I look at them and, and there, there could be something that, oh, this isn't going to work, like their approach isn't going to work.
I was trying, because you brought it up earlier, I don't remember if we set it up that a couple of you want to take a look at the proposals with me. This is just like a comparison. I did look at them, I reached out for references and I got a few. But if you want to look at the proposals, if we have it down to two or three especially where you can look at the details, you can come in and sit down with them.
Yep, sounds great. I'll commit to doing that.
Okay, so Laurie, you'll work on that with Susan. And if anyone else wants to, feel free to reach out to Susan so that you can do that. I'm going to ask though that, that we try to have the information back so the board can make a decision at our next meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
Because we, and I know you. Because we, and I know you all know this, but we need this information done, and we've got to get them started on it, because we want this in time for our budgeting season for next year, which means, which means we need it this, you know...
Finish off this year.
Well, yeah. Yeah, yes, correct. Correct.
I, I do have a question. I know that we said we wanted to have in-meeting things with them, but a lot of the additional costs for these are because of travel.
Travel.
Correct.
With Zoom capability, do we need to actually meet with someone from Minnesota, for example?
That's a good point.
I just, I just, you know, someone at 54 comes down to 34, if we don't have 20 hours of travel, and we just meet with them by...
It makes a big difference, right.
I think it was good that we put it in there, but now that we've seen the reality of it, compared to, well, yeah, the one from, yeah, the one from Plymouth isn't putting in travel, okay. But some of these others, the travel's significant, based on our need to meet with them in person, maybe we don't have to.
Did we put that in the proposal, that we needed in person? I don't know.
Yeah, I believe we did.
I think we did.
Which is, which is why the travel requirement is, is called up.
Right. And I had a question from somebody, asking if we would go with Zoom rather than in-person. And I was told to stick with the RFP, which says in-person. So, so that's why they all included it. If you want to take that away and go with Zoom, I, but, you know, it's kind of...
But then we'd, we would then have to notify all the applicants...
Because I had one that backed out for that reason.
Right. But, but it's, it's a, it's a reasonable thing to do. And if we give them all the opportunity to tell us, how much less would the contract be if there was, if we used Zoom instead of in-house visit? Let's find out.
Yeah. And most of these do delineate what it is. Well, the ones that just said included, it might not be spelled out, but this one obviously is.
Yeah.
Couple of them are. It will make a difference.
That would be a fair way of leveling the playing field.
Well, it would, except that...
You have one that didn't send one in.
Yeah, if we didn't, if we change the requirements of the RFP, then we'd have to reissue it.
You're gonna have to reissue it.
All right, okay.
All right, well, take a closer look at it, and hopefully we'll have enough information to make a decision when we meet next.
Yep.
Susan, if you could, please make a note to yourself, for an agenda item, for Carrie over to...
It's June 2nd, so that's just some time.
Okay. The front stair railings, there is a meeting today, apparently here, at noon time. Tom Rowan will be here with the representative from the contractor.
I'll be there.
And Lori will be there to represent.
Peter will also be there. He said he was planning to be here.
Oh, he'll, oh, okay.
Right.
So we'll have more information on that after that. I don't have any new business. Does anyone else? Public comment number two, none. Board business, anything on board business, Susan, anything, board members, correspondents? Okay. We have, okay, we have an application from the Friends of the Historical Museum.
Is this a legal document?
Well, it has a lot of pages.
It's my point.
But, but some of it is, some of it is replies from department heads, after they reviewed the, the, no, it's our, it's our document, it's the application.
By Rick.
By Rick. It's the application for facilities use, application of ours. And this is for August 1st and 2nd. August 1st being for setup, and August 2nd for the event and cleanup. There's a map in, included with it, that shows the areas of the planes that, that will be used, Areas 1, 2, and 3, and designated Area 1 for Flea Market and Business Showcase, Area 2 and 3 for vehicle dis... Anyway, the diagram shows where on the planes it will be. This event was held on the planes two years ago. Last year, it was moved to the high school. And I believe, based on a response that they got from folks who attended, there was a much stronger preference for having it back on the planes, so that's why it's coming back to the planes. Is that right, Lori?
Yes.
I think, okay.
Yes.
So we have, one of the things we have to make sure of, and, and I believe Susan put it as a note here, that the only power that's available on the planes right now is over near the gazebo. And a part of this event happens away from that area. And so they would need to be supplying their own power.
If they, if they need it, right.
Right.
Yep.
Will we be do, will anything else be going on, that will somehow, this be disruptive, or vice versa, with the stuff with the water, and then trying to put in the electric panels and stuff?
The waters, the well drilling, that should be done. But I don't know what the timeframe is gonna be for digging trenches, so that is a question.
When is, it should be done when? This is August 2nd, so when, when are they starting?
I don't know when they're doing the electrical, that's up for...
The wells?
The wells are in process now.
Okay.
And their plan was to finish by the end of June, or soon after, because the report has to go to DES in August.
Okay.
So, and has to go back to Sandborne.
So it just has to be coordination? If we approve this, it just has to, right, right.
I don't know.
It's a tight schedule, because if they're due to be done, if the water's due to be done by the end of June, that only leaves July for the electrical. And I don't know that they could do it in a few weeks.
Right. Or it just waits, or it just waits until after August 2nd, and they start. Because when we awarded it, A, we stopped to hold the public hearing, but we didn't give a start date.
Right.
So it doesn't have to be before it, Ellie, I guess is my point. Like, they can do it after.
Okay.
It's a one-day event, so they can do it.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. We don't have anything else planned, I think, on the planes.
No, as far as I know, there isn't anything.
So the fire chief has signed off on this, stating that a staffed ambulance with two EMS providers is required.
But no one else has signed off.
Yeah.
Yeah, Joel has, and so has Tom.
Am I looking at the wrong paper, or do I not have the right?
It's on three different pages.
It's on three different pages, Ellie.
There you go.
She, Leslie brought it around.
On the second page, is the response from the chief of police, says, "Good to go." I guess I don't know if that means that it doesn't need police detail?
No, it still does.
Well, I thought so, but...
I think he used it.
It's outlined here on page...
Oh, it is.
Six of eight, that much I saw.
Okay, all right. Anyway, Joel has signed off on it, and then...
Yeah, Tom's only concern is the electrical.
And Tom, it's the third page in the packet, and the note, it looks like then it's his note at the bottom, right?
Yeah, Lisa wrote that in.
Lisa, with regard to the electrical. So all three department heads have signed off on it. We do have... As the, as the representative of the museum, Friends of the Museum, Leslie Hume has signed off on this application, to submit it. And then there's the, the map of the planes, showing the areas to be used. And the final page is a certificate of viability insurance from the Friends of Kingston Historical Museum Association, with Town of Kingston being the certificate holder.
So I, I do know that they're also looking at, still conversations, but they're looking at possibly doing a small touch-a-truck for little kids, since they're doing the car show, and they might try to pull off a cowpatty. So, yeah.
So, questions from the board on this? Do we need anything further, before we take action on it?
No.
Then may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the facilities use request for the Heritage Day held on 2 August on the planes.
Motion by Lori?
I'm gonna second it, but before, I do have a question, I'm sorry.
Second by Ellen, further discussion?
Do we ever let any of the people around the planes know any of these things are going on, or we just do it? We don't?
We just do it.
We just do it.
Okay. I just wonder, I just don't know. So, okay, I'll second it.
So, Ellen seconded it. Is there any more further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously. So, is it this first page right here? Where it says Boris Leckman?
Oh, look at, that's a weird copy. It's here, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll let her know that, and that she'll need to coordinate with Tom, and...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, we have the... We have this document back, hello?
Mr. President, did you want to speak to the board?
It's gonna be non-public.
Oh, okay.
Yep, thanks, yep.
So the...
That's Mari.
Oh, thank you. I'm like, okay, I'm like, everyone seems to know. I'm like, I don't know. Thank you. Where am I signing this thing? Do I have to sign this?
Yes, right on the front page.
No, it's, it's this one line.
Oh, I see, I'm like, okay.
So this is back in the packet for signature, because we had a question on it the last meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to talk about that, please.
These are... This is the additional charge from Sandborne Head, that we had to add to their contract, because we had initially anticipated that some of their, some of their costs were gonna be covered by the grant from DES. And we found out that those were not eligible costs, and so an additional amount had to be added. But when we discussed it last week, there was a question about which line this additional money was gonna come from. And I believe we were told by the finance officer that it would need to come from contracted services. Unless there are other questions on this, I'll take a motion to, it looks like there's one signature on here, so I'll take a motion to authorize me to sign it. Motion by Ellie, second by Lori, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Abstentions, so that's unanimous.
Does anybody else have this other application for, okay.
Yeah, it's just... Yes.
Sometimes the, there, Susan, for you.
There is that one other facilities use form in your packets. It is very preliminary. I only wanted you to be aware that I had that request. The person that's requesting it wanted to come to the next meeting.
Thank you.
He wants to come talk to you on June 2nd, and, and explain what he's got in mind, so I just wanted to give you a heads up. It's obviously not ready for signature yet.
Can we just deny this one, and have him put in one that actually has information on it?
I told him we're gonna need a lot more information. He said, "Well, I'd like to come in and talk to the board." He said, "We're still gonna need it in writing," yeah.
This is, this, this, we're gonna have to deny anyway, because it doesn't say anything.
Doesn't say anything, right.
So can we just vote to deny this, to get it off the plate, and if he wants to come in on the 2nd, he can, and explains this to us? But there's no point in even keeping this around, because it doesn't say anything.
And I even wrote in some things, because he was sitting there telling me, but he, he needs a real application.
We need a full application.
Yeah, so can we just, you know, is there a place to just say, "Denied"?
He can come in and talk, because that's appropriate to do.
Yes, absolutely.
And then if he's gonna apply, he needs to put in a better...
But this is not a half a dozen people doing yoga on the planes.
No, so let's just deny this, and...
Okay. Oh, no.
Make that motion?
Yeah, make a motion to deny this, and the gentleman can come in and explain it, and actually fill out a better one, but right now, we're denying this.
Motion by Ellen, second by Ellie, discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, unanimous. Anything else before we move on to minutes? Then we're doing minutes of May 12, both public and non-public. Motion by Ellie?
Second.
Second by Ellen, discussion, any changes or corrections?
Can I just comment that I, I think that Sarah did a great job, like, for her first, because it was a lot, right? So, I think she did a great job, so.
So noted. She does, I, I mean, I've been on other, served on other committees where she has, she's done minutes, and she's, she does a good job.
Yeah, yep.
And it's nice, because, I mean, you heard her when she was here with us. I mean, if she has a question, she'll ask, she won't just assume.
Yeah, she's typing in as we go.
Yeah. Okay, all, did I vote on that? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, unanimous. Right. So I believe we do have a couple of non-public items, so just for the, if there's anybody listening to this now, I don't know if we're out live anymore, or if we're, hopefully, hopefully we're being recorded, and it'll be playing out into the ether. And we will, we're gonna be going into non-public session at, it looks like it's 10:45 a.m. And I'll take a motion to enter non-public at, per RSA, 91A3, Roman 2, which letter would it be?
Are you talking about personnel?
I assume it's personnel.
It would be A, versus compensation. Yep, that's under A.
What, I'm sorry.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, the person thing.
A.
Sorry, I was doing my math to see how many weeks we...
Do I have a motion to that effect?
Yes.
To go into non-public?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Motion by Ellen, second by Ellie. Roll call, Ellen?
Yes.
Ellie, Glenn, yes, Lori?
Yes.
Okay. So we're in non-public at 11, I'm sorry, 10:45, something. And we won't be, we won't be entering public session, except we close the meeting. So we're, we're in the process of...